First meeting of the Chagrin Falls Board of Education.
I'm watching the...
Ms. Luca, would you please take the call?
Mr. Gargi?
Yes.
Mr. Rankin?
Yes.
Mrs. Rose?
Yes.
Mr. Kanzinger?
Here.
Mrs. O'Toole?
Yes.
Here. Please join me as we stand in the face of the flag for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. So this is the point in our meeting where we invite public comment. If there's anyone here tonight who would like to say something to the board or speak with the board, then I have a few guidelines to share with you if you could just indicate that you would like to make a comment. Seeing none, we'll just proceed to the next item on the agenda, which is Board Reports. At this time, we share our Board Committee updates. As I run through each of the Board Committees, if a committee that you represent has not met since our last meeting or you have no new updates, just say "no report." The Audit Committee, Mrs. O'Toole.
No reports.
The Policy Committee, Mrs. Rose. The Business Advisory Committee, Mr. Rankin.
Has not met, but will tomorrow morning.
The Capital Planning Committee is me, and I have no report. The Board Finance and Budget Committee, Mr. Rankin.
We met last night. There were some new members into the committee. We'll get to know you, and then basically looking through the... We approved our charter or reviewed our charter, and then reviewed the financial package when we get on a regular basis. We'll do that. So our next meeting for July 8th, this room at 6:00.
If you want to board new charter, I'd like to help with that. Records retention, there's no report tonight. Superintendents report. At this point, I'll turn the meeting over to Mr. Hunt for the superintendents' report.
Good evening, thank you. First report this evening is a recognition of a tremendous program that we have in our school and our community. If you don't know, on April 22nd, 2019, May 1st, just today, school crossing guard day. And we wanted to just take a moment this evening to recognize those individuals that are consistently out there helping and supporting young people in school. Obviously, their responsibilities include being visible, recognizable, helping to slow traffic down along the way, providing for presence for walkers and bikers along the way, and obviously stepping out in the street from traffic sometime to slow people down so as to easily see across. I think the piece that may be missing in all of this is every time you have an adult that's consistently somewhere that interacts with young people, it's an opportunity for assistance in the growth and development of that young person. And those daily day interactions, whether it's a simple hello or a pat on the back, go a long, long way. And we know in research, when students are connected to adults in their community, they're more likely to be successful. So I don't want to minimize what they do from a function standpoint, but when I look at the benefits of the program, I would say that that is one of the greatest benefits. So thank you for being there for our young people, protecting them, interacting with them, and developing relationships with them. I know Mrs. Gargi also has a question to comment on.
Right, I just want to thank you that all the crossing guards are volunteers. And there are five corners, I think, that are being covered this year on a regular basis, so every morning and every afternoon in the main intersections where our students are crossing. So just want to thank you for your service. I know that every day you're out there, you know that you're making a difference. It's one of the most rewarding things that I do. I still do two shows a week, and I love it. It makes my day when I do it. So I'm going to read your name, and we're going to have everybody come up at one time so we can get a photograph. And then we do have a certificate for you. And after we're done with that, we'd like to invite all the family members in the audience here to enjoy some cake and punch. And we'll take a five-minute recess. So as I call your name, if you'll please come up. First and foremost, very importantly, is our crossing guard manager, who is Sandy Top. I'll give these to you later. If you'll line up in front of the table, I'd probably be the best. Deborah Blair, I think could not be here tonight. Paul Brandt also told me he couldn't be here tonight. Eva Rose, I'll just give it to you, Sharon. Jen Condon. Rebecca Haas, also couldn't be here. Just the first few, we've got a good group here. Ellen Herman. There she is. Addie Holderen. Judy Lawrence. Karen Savell. Go ahead and stand and we'll get a picture. Jennifer Levine, I know also could not be here tonight, it's because her husband's birthday. Paul Schmidt. Ron Schuler. Dave Shandlin. Carolyn Seeler. Dutch Wilkinson. Glenn Rabel. And Mallory Ann Mariola. Okay, so if you guys could kind of squeeze together, be friendly, little ones up front.
Go in between.
As long as you can see the camera, the camera can see you. Ron, would you just come right here a little bit, and then if you could go in a little bit, and I'll stand here. And Bob, do you want to join us?
Sure.
Do you want the whole board or no, Captain?
Um, just for right now, why don't we do this, because I think we won't all fit.
No, you won't all fit, actually.
All right.
Trying to get out. Me too.
How are you?
Is that okay?
Well, that's good, I'm short.
The camera isn't wide enough for somebody.
Let me do one more. Do you want us to rotate, so we're kind of... You know what, I'm wondering if I could... Make sure you get your whole face, and try one more time with this, okay? Someone's got these great smiles. All right, one, two, three. One, two, three. All right. For the rest of the board can also say hello and shake their hand. And then here's your certificate. Sandy, could I ask you to... So there's a copy of the proclamation behind each certificate. And there's cake and country.
Thank you.
There you go. Free cake.
I changed the cake. A few years ago, I got called truly duty, and I talked to David. He was a lawyer, and he got me off for a while, but I finally had to go. See, it was a slump and fall. We had two of them, one was a shitty, the other one was a streaking car. This woman was dressed to the nines, running for graduation.
Is that a piece of cake?
Yeah, it is. You know, the pickets are cake, and they're going back and going back and forth. The store was well-marked because of the wet board, the belt, rolled her elbow. And we're going all through this stuff for over a day, three or four days. The guy behind me, who put the case out for fall, that's the one who he said, he's here. Never told us what happened to that kid here. And the judge, was a female judge, she's still on the court. She turned around and gave a scare. She was laughing too. I broke up.
Mike said he'd like to say something to you.
Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah, you're welcome.
No, boy, she's... After the... We haven't seen him in a while. Trump. That's... Oh, you know, it's real cold now. Side by side. I think he's still... When they want to drop some...
I was great, but...
How about... Okay, anyone want a chocolate? You want a cake? Anyone else a chocolate?
I'm like...
Is it good?
No, I'm fine. She's all right.
I'd like to go on, but I said just go to this school and then you can... This is your shape of chocolate.
Thank you.
He's in seventh grade. He is a big senior. He's looking good.
Congratulations.
Oh, that's what the lady took apart.
There's guaranteed more coming. Let's get out, we need to change our clothes.
Oh, that's tomorrow, right? Yep.
People are...
Yeah, I'm just... I'm like... Yeah, I'm like... Yeah. Yeah. I really... I'm like... You have a lot of work. You have a lot of... You're bad. You're... Straight. Your spine's straight. It will make it better, make those muscles strong. And then it'll feel better.
I know I'm high. I...
That horse is our pet, Sharon. That's our pet, Sharon.
Thank you. You have a money.
Of course, I did, I did. I was just...
That guy over there.
I think you guys are doing some...
No, he's a parent.
My birthday, you're spring. I want you to sit out. You're bringing my back.
Unfortunately, we have a lot more business to cover, so I have to call the meeting back to order. But for the crossing guards, again, thank you so much. I hope you had a chance to meet all the board members. Also, we have a lot of cake, and Sandy has your certificate. So if you could report over to the cake table before you leave, that would be great. And if I can just have everybody else join the other table, we'll get started on the...
Get something to take home, you know.
I've got plenty of food.
Oh, right.
Pay taxes, so you're involved.
I think you ate the cake. I won't see you. Who's dealing?
Sandy's. And the jean jacket. My girl. My baby graduates this year.
Oh, boy.
Okay, I just wanted to also announce, for the crossing guards, after you've gotten your certificate and your cake to take home, you're welcome to leave. You don't have to stay for the meeting, obviously, and we won't be offended if you just leave when you're ready. We're going to go ahead and proceed with the meeting. Mr. Hunt, do you want to go ahead and talk about 5B?
Yes, I'd like to introduce Mr. David Barker. David worked throughout the course of this year, looking at the potential consolidation of the sports over the umbrella of the school this year, what it might look like, just kind of a refresher or a reminder of organization. Last week, CSA approached us and asked us about this concept. We were in agreement, and we were in this conversation. So David took on the challenge of working with both organizations to understand their structure, their needs, and their desires. And I'm going to steal his thumb there, I'm going to let him share with you the work. To attach it to the board perspective, that PowerPoint will be delivered, and we also have an executive summary that they put together that someone asked us everything. So without further ado, I'm going to take it from there. All right, thank you for giving a few minutes tonight to go over what I've been doing the last four or five months with the youth sports project.
Dave, sorry, would you mind standing on this side?
On this side?
Yeah, we started videotaping our meetings, and now they can see the speaker.
I'm going to briefly touch on why we started the project, maybe a little history of both organizations, what we learned, and then where we are, where we are right now with the project moving forward. Bob touched a little bit on the district. He was approached last year by CSA to see if there was sort of an interest with the school to take over the youth sports in this community. Bob then reached out to the leadership of CAA and asked them if they were interested. They were at least interested in sitting down and discussing some of the merits of a partnership. And whatever we found out, the direction was going to be determined by the study. We didn't have any preconceived notions on where it was going to go, what was going to happen. Although, when I went through the process, I did actually, I looked at it with the idea of we weren't going to take them over, because I felt it would be easier to backtrack if it didn't work, or there would be parts of it that weren't going to work. So that's kind of how I approached it. So I started out by meeting with the leaders of both organizations to gauge their interest in a partnership, if they had any non-negotiable items, if they were going to come under the umbrella of the school, or if they had some certain ideas on how they envisioned it looking if everybody came together under the school's umbrella. I think an important part of this whole, at least when I learned about it, was the history of both organizations play a big part in this study. Both organizations, I really think, are really ingrained into our community. CAA was started formally in the early 70s, by 1972. CSA was formed in the late 70s under CAA's watch, and then they went on their own. But if you think about children back in that day, or children now, almost that was it. Most of the kids in this community probably have played some sort of sport at some time under one of those organizations. So I think there certainly is a lot of history with both groups. One of the things that I did do was I wanted to look at other communities to see how they would run their youth sports. So we looked locally, we looked at schools like Aurora, Kensington, Charred, West Jaw, Orange, to kind of get an idea of what they do. Regionally, we looked at Rocky River, and then we went down to Bexley and Indian Hills, kind of similar schools, to kind of see if there was any similarities with what they do with their youth sports, if we could take some of what they do, use it as a model moving forward. What I found out was most of the other communities, they are city-run rec programs that already have large staffs in place. Some of them were financed through levies, taxing agents. Every once in a while, you'll find somebody that, a community that had, like, baseball will have their own organizations, completely separate from football or baseball. So there really wasn't anybody that had the same setup that we do here. We're very unique in the fact that we've got two organizations that are self-funded, and they are volunteer, they run by volunteers for the most part. The next thing I took a look at was their mission statements, because if they were going to come under, if they were having association with the school, obviously, we feel that their, how they run their organizations, their mission needs to coincide with what the school stands for. I will say this, both groups, all they have is the best interests of the kids at their heart. And they, both of them, they talk about sportsmanship, leadership, all the things that you want your children to strive for. They just use sports as an avenue to get there. They're both well-run organizations, they both have, like I said, they have the best interests of the kids at heart. Obviously, they're doing it through different avenues with the different sports, but that's, their mission statement, I think, really coincides with the school district as well. Their organization and structure is basically, everything they do is geared towards what their mission statement is. CAA has an 11-member board, president, vice president, secretary. Every one of their different sports has a commissioner that's on the board. CSA is same thing, they have an eight-member board, president, vice president, secretary, treasurer. However, they do have an actually paid administrator on their staff that does all their scheduling and a lot of administrative work that CAA does not... CSA actually pays one of their employees.
Dave, can you remind me of the sports that fall under CAA?
Sure. Well, CAA is, they have nine sports, boys and girls basketball, boys and girls lacrosse. They have wrestling, golf, baseball, softball. Yeah, that's under their umbrella. And CSA obviously just does something.
How many years does CSA have paid somebody? Because I had to volunteer, you know.
They have been paying somebody, we did our financial summary, which is the next, I went about five years back, and they started, they were paying somebody basically about five, four, four or five years ago, they started, basically. So getting to the financial summary, so what I did is I looked at each group's revenues, their expenses, a history of about four or five years, to kind of get a feel for if they were stable, if they were solvent, if they were running on a shoestring. I can say that both organizations are on solid financial ground. They both have a significant cash balance if they needed to make any major purchases. So they, and you know, every, once in a while, you'll have a one year that they may lose money to that because they had to buy more equipment, uniform turnover, or something like that. But for the most part, all of them are on financial solid ground. Neither one of them spends frivolously at all. They really watch out for their money, and you know, they're not in any kind of situation where they would have to fundraise to keep their operation going forward. Then we kind of get into just the current operations of each group. And basically, the one thing that I wanted to talk about was their enrollment numbers and the trends moving forward. So enrollment, as far as your enrollment goes, CSA has about 300 kids that play soccer. They offer both rec and travel soccer. Their rec program, they pay $100, and they get to play in the fall and the spring. Their travel program is actually run by an outside organization for sports, if anybody's familiar with it. They pay about $575 for their travel program. Forrest actually does all the coaching and training for them for CSA. Of those 300 kids that play rec, about 185 play travel soccer. CAA, on the other hand, they have about 700 kids that are enrolled. Those sports range anywhere in the rec program from, say, $90 to $120, depending on the sport. They probably have about another 100 kids that also play a travel sport, and the fees for those will depend on the sport, you know, with how many tournaments the coaches are going to take their kids to, how many practices they're going to have during the offseason. But again, it runs anywhere between 400, and sometimes the baseball travel, depending on where they're going, will range up to 6, 650 for those guys. But the trends moving forward, the leadership, CSA is saying that they expect the numbers to stay consistent going forward. CSA, with all their sports, their main sports, they have a lot of numbers that they've been consistent up and down the line, and will continue to be consistent, are basketball, lacrosse, and the younger stages of baseball, T-ball, things like that. Their golf program and their wrestling program have small numbers, but they certainly are consistent. And every once in a while, they'll have a spike in a year where there's more kids that want to get involved with it. Their golf program, they actually just started a few years ago, so that's just kind of been off the ground. The one sport that is showing a decrease in participation is football. Not to bore you with the details, but they only have, I think, one team this past year. They had as many as five in the past. A lot of kids now are playing flag football, and it is not just a shooting balls issue. There's a lot of communities, even major football communities, Aurora being one of them, that they're... them, that they are seeing a big decrease in the number of kids that are playing tackle football.
What do you think that's contributing to?
I mean, I would guess it's the concussion here. I mean, that's probably the biggest thing. I know about three or four years ago, CAA used to have five football teams, and now this past year, they have one. Aurora was in a similar boat, they may have had two, but they have more kids who rock on like this. But it's kinda, it seems to be one of the big, in any of the articles we read, that, you know, some of the medical professions try to keep kids off playing tackle football until they're able to go over. So I think maybe the fear backed it from the parents, or did has part of that, you know, partly plays into that.
Dave, is that an active conversation at CAA, flag versus tackle?
Well, that's part of the growth potential, they have discussed it. Coach Iomarino has also kind of asked them if they would consider it. That's absolutely something that they would be interested in, it's a way that they could grow their numbers if they wanted to. Currently, a lot of the kids go and play flag football in Kinston, and that's where they get their football, if they're not going to play tackle, they will play flag football in Kinston, but they are registering due to Kinston's.
Kinston runs Chigrin teams.
Yes, yes, exactly. So, but it is something that CAA has discussed on whether they can get, you know, have enough kids to at least form a team under our, under their registration, send them to Kinston, or whatever league they would play and play some flag football. The other area of growth for CAA is, that they've discussed is cheerleading. It would obviously target a different market that they have never targeted. It's also, they've, people come to them a lot and say, "Well, why aren't you offering, you know, volleyball, why aren't you offering this?" Well, a lot of it is because of the facilities, you know, facilities that they just don't have access to a lot of times, especially inside facilities. Cheerleading wouldn't be something that would necessarily take a big facility for them to come and provide to do it, so it's something that they have kicked around, you know, in the past. CSA has told me that they are looking to increase their numbers as well by, and obviously, soccer is a sport that is conducive to playing at a younger level, so they would even talk about going younger and having, you know, maybe limited training sessions for their younger kids to try to get involved earlier, so that they believe that they could actually increase their numbers moving forward as well.
Dave, sorry to interrupt.
Oh, sure.
With regard to the fees that parents are charged or students are charged, are we comparable to other districts, or is that a fair thing to ask?
I mean, we're comparable to, I mean, CSA, they actually have a very good deal of $100 for basically two seasons. That's a very good deal. CAA is, you know, most of their rec programs fall under the, you know, the consistent, if you compare to other schools, it's same, very similar. I did not get into the, like, the rec program or the travel programs in those other districts. They were basically so big, and, you know, they just, every year they'd get a new uniform, so I don't, we had no idea how much they were charging for their travel programs, that some of them were associated with third party, just had to bring that access to them.
I guess part of where that would lead is, could there be a cost savings to a parent if there was some consolidation of these organizations?
To a parent, potentially, we haven't gone down that road yet, I mean, how it would be, I think the savings to a parent, I think, is going to be more of the, hopefully, if we can do this, to be able to open up some more facilities, that they could practice here, maybe in off-seasons rather than have to drive 30 minutes to practice at a different facility. That would, that would help save the organizations some money, and maybe that, you know, will keep the costs from increasing down the line. Obviously, they're probably not going to reduce their costs, but it certainly would maybe limit their costs moving forward.
What would you stop from using our facilities now?
Well, nothing hinders them from using our facilities in-season, but the policy has been that if it was an off-season, like, say, if they'd say a baseball team wants to start practicing in February, and they would ask to use the gym, that was something that in the past, we have not allowed them to have access to. If we do, we go down this road, it would be something that I think that would be beneficial to both organizations and to the school. I mean, CAA has specifically told me that they would rather, rather than pay $60 to rent a gymnasium somewhere, they would rather pay the $41 or $42 that they paid for the school to get their kids to have to, you know, just drive five minutes, not, you know, not have to drive all the way out to somewhere else to do it. But that's kind of been the reason why it hasn't been offered to them in the past. Now, they get offered facilities in-season, you know, basketball gets to whatever gym time is left after the school team's done, but they're worried about opening up a cannon worms, like, who's going to, you know, who's gonna start asking for it then under CAA? My thought, as we go forward, would be that if you had somebody in the school that said, "Listen, this is what you have, you can divide it up amongst your own teams, how you want. So here's your time, here's your time, split the time between the two groups," and the negative organization, "I would want rather than a CAA baseball coach calling the athletic department saying, 'We have the gym,' or a CAA lacrosse coach saying, 'We have the gym.'"
Is that something you essentially recommend, even if you don't have a consolidation?
Yes.
And the improvement to access to our facilities?
Absolutely.
So I know they both pay administrators. CSA pays, which is adequate in addition to the space. Does CAA have any sports or any professional coaches?
They've paid, I would say, it's never happened, I mean, because they do, like, they have paid, like, girls' basketball, once they brought in a coach, they didn't have a whole lot of girls, so they paid somebody to run some programs for them. They were, like, people from Chigrin, it wasn't like an outside professional, but they, CAA is 99% all volunteer. One of the things, once we got done towards the end of the report, the one thing that we learned was the fact that both organizations want to keep their autonomy. They've worked really hard to develop what they have right now, and they don't want to give that up. But they do see the benefit of collaborating together to find some common ground, and they understand that there are benefits of partnering with the school moving forward that can help their organization. So I think they're both willing to go down that road, they're just not willing to hand over the keys to the school and say, "Here you go, you know, we're out." Because both of them would be sold, they're solid, fundamentally sound programs right now. So it gets us to where our recommendations and where we stand right now. One of the main things that both organizations talked about is they would like to have the school, the health mouth, maybe some registration help, some marketing help. Right now, everybody kinda has their own, they have their own website, and there are people maybe not, if you're from the village, you understand where to go, but if you're a new family, you may not understand, you may not know where to go. What we're trying to do is maybe get, you know, a single onboarding point on the school's website where people do know they go to Chigrin Youth Sports, they hit the link, there's CAA, CSA, that's, you know, right there for them, and then they can just, they can click and go in and do their registrations. Right now, what we're doing is we are going down the road and talking with somebody on whether the school can handle all their registrations, or do they still want to have, do the registrations themselves? It's just something we just started going down that road just recently.
I'm wondering, if the school partners with this, would we have Title IX implications? Because, I mean, there's a lot more boys' sports than girls'.
I don't know that, you know, it's a game of sports, and I know some of these districts would look at it, run it, this, you know, implications. One of the things I would say is, we brought Lauren to their part in the conversation as well, just wanting to see where, where do these pieces, if we were moving forward, where would they fit within our organization? Again, but that's, those are conversations that are just kind of starting the paths, and I can see what our conditions might take on, maybe one of these pieces, kind of shining a light on, where we see some opportunities for potential synergy, and we're looking to the next step.
The next, besides the marketing and registration that they've asked about, they're interested in a single point of contact at the school. So if it was a registration question, we envision that, we don't have a community yet, somebody would go to the community yet. If it was anything operationalized amongst the sports, they would come to the athletic department. And, you know, the athletic department, whoever's in charge of that, could handle things like scheduling, mediation, if there's any conflict between the two groups, you know, "We should have this, you know, field, we should have this gym," and that point of contact, kind of get, and say, you know, kind of ease the feathers there. The one thing that both groups were interested in was a standardized code of conduct that players, coaches, and parents would have to follow. That's something that we would like to develop, so everybody would be under the same, you know, rules, regulations on how we expect people to act. Honestly, it's probably not the kids, it's probably more the adults anyways, but at that level, but it's just something rather than CSA having their own code of conduct, CAA having their own code of conduct, have one code of conduct for coverage at the court. Coaching standards, right now, CAA, their coaches are required to pass, they're, take the Lunses law, their concussion test will have a return to play. They do have a code of conduct that they're supposed to follow, the same with CSA, they have to do the same thing. Now, the travel coaches, obviously, in CSA, from the force, they're not volunteers. So we would like to make sure that we had a standardized code of conduct for the coaches, and also maybe get them involved a little bit with our Positive Coaching Alliance, which is, I think, a tremendous thing for everybody to kind of get an idea of what they should, if they're gonna coach young children, how they should act, you know, what their job should be, it should not be about trying to get wins and losses, it should be about developing the kids to the best of their ability. And then the last thing is maybe combining some resources, you know, if there's any potential savings with each group, whether it's insurance, storage, we talked about the facility, open up the facilities more than they could run our facility rather than rent somewhere else with a lot more money, just certain things like that that would help them possibly save some money. You've asked a question, Tom, if anybody has more on the half of answers on right now.
So, have both organizations heard your recommendations?
Yeah, well, the recommendations have come about by just sitting down and talking with them, and these are the ones that we've kind of agreed as a group that we're, we probably need to start initially through this process. So they, so they're, everybody kind of, they're sharing ideas about code of conduct, about marketing, about websites, about things like that, so everybody's on the same page.
We organize, do we have enough facilities to service all the programs they have, so people don't have to drive 30 minutes to play?
No. I mean, CSA uses force, CAA, I mean, even, if just taking the winter, for instance, I mean, the fall is not as, any of the outside stuff is usually not as bad, because there's at least more options. It's the inside stuff, it's basketball, I mean, in the wintertime, they get, they've run, CAA's run a community game before, they run a family life center, you know, obviously we're down with a gymnasium the last couple of years, but they're at the mercy of the school teams, the school practices and things like that. But it could help alleviate at least some of it moving forward.
There's no question, fields, in terms of access in the field, and I guess quality, is that the only way you can describe it, or the standard is a concern? Probably a field. Quality of the field and just the number of spaces, it's just not enough spaces to accommodate. I can tell you that's not even a problem, but, you know, identifying that we had blocked off, kind of standard, blocked off, blocked off space, allowed for a really good conversation about, well, there's opportunity, that we could open some of ourselves up, and, you know, that's something that I think we're open to approach. It's not gonna resolve the issues, still be there, but helps, I think. I'll say something, or they're outside. So I think with this, I'm not looking for approval or maybe for help not, full consolidation is an extreme, and I think we very quickly realized there was an interest in autonomy, and we had a really good job, financially stable, but sitting over at the table and having all the conversations, led us to think, there's a few real opportunities that could be considered as first steps. And some of what they've talked about, we could acquire a resource on our department for adding someone as their single elementary, that's gonna be the resource application. So that's a further conversation, and maybe the next step of this is to further enhance conversations. What I'm aiming to do is not implement anything until we can get back, but these are, we're interested in continuing the conversation and taking the next step.
So they allocate in their expenses currently each for administrative assistants?
I think just CSA, CAA, CAA.
CAA is a lot.
CAA may have paid.
Except they're paying the website. Are you anticipating a personnel, or is it gonna be absorbed within?
I'm saying, one of the areas that they've especially interested in that, and to do that, is going to be a personnel component all the time, and I envision you could pay the athletic department and the organization, it's a matter of, okay, what does that actually look like, what are your implementations of that, how much time it costs, and then you're taking that next step, and saying, okay, this does make sense, that's the conversation we're bringing back, we would say. Here's what it looks like now, is the next step. Some of this, you know, we are working on scheduling, we're all alone working on some consolidation opportunity, you set off your insurance policies, your insurance, is there an opportunity here where you approach, as a larger entity, is there an opportunity for cost? Some of this we can move forward with not, not a lot of cost, but items that will drain out resources, pressure our resources, and that's a still, that makes a difference.
Okay, thank you. Thanks for your time.
My presentation will be ready in a few minutes. So the next presentation or conversation is relevant to staffing, to the 2019, 2020 school year. A lot of the information that we shared tonight has been kind of shared with the board on various occasions over the last, you know, four or five months, but I want to kind of bring that to the forefront as we're looking at agreeing a finer forecast of abilities and budgets to make sure that we're on the same page. Additionally, there are some recommendations on the agenda tonight to improve position. It's important to know, people's positions are consistent for final recognition, if we can improve, if we can create a greater slot to roster to the most important positions. So when we talk about staffing, I think it's first important to realize, staffing is not a spring event in totality, it's an ongoing process that we look at internally. We're constantly, probably annoying to the cabinet, but every cabinet starts with a more than a week contract, it's a weekly basis, looking at generally stand in terms of enrollment, sacking levels throughout the history. You look at that through the fall, another weekend, and once January, and it's been looking at it, we need to monitor, you know, where we can go. If you look at that process in September, January, it's really evaluating data, looking at student achievement, or the programs that are not working, or the things that we need to do. It's kind of teaming things up for, okay, what point come in the spring in terms of recognition, what we need to improve in certain areas. If you look at that January to March window, that's when we really begin to enroll in staffing roles, and make, kind of begin to develop our master schedules in the building. It's very important to realize or understand that elementary scheduling is very different, secondary scheduling, and even our four through six is a bit, we can't control it while we offer a kind of schedule, I'll talk a little bit more about that. So it's not always just a pure math, you know, problem, X number of students by X number of teachers, and this class size, and you're going, I'm gonna talk a little bit about why that is. In April, we look at overstaff, where our reduction of force, work from education, our reduction of workforce. act, our reduction of force last month, and we have until the end of next month. If we wanted to look at, or overstaffed in the area of enrollment, maybe there's recommendations at that time. Obviously, May, we make recommendations too as a board of education to be included in the five-year forecast and then we'll continue monitoring enrollment by the summer. I think what's important to note here is we act upon the best information we have at the given time, but that constantly changes and change. We just, you know, take a move into the district with high special education needs, you know, one-on-one staff member that need to come with a student or a responsible. For example, for preschool students right now, we've gone back and forth on whether that need is there, is currently in the budget, we had a conversation today and maybe that's not there, so that would be something that we may feel that we're, but know that we're constantly looking at this and staffing can change over time. We'll talk a little bit about kindergarten here in a bit, kindergarten is one that always a juvenile, we're looking at crossing our fingers hoping to be able, but can be a way to play staffing changes. So I just wanted to kind of point out to you that staffing is kind of not a golden process that goes around the person here.
That's really helpful.
One of the obvious pieces of data that we're constantly monitoring, talking about is enrollment throughout the district and we did, about fifty-five or sixty years it's been practiced to do, we're going to say, look at birth counts, look at methodology and trend in terms of enrollment. So this is just a graph that shows you fairly consistent enrollment over time. We peaked in fifteen, sixteen, you know, over two thousand students and dropped down to around fifteen hundred students. If you look at the study from starting in fall, projections would lead you to believe that enrollment would dip into the seventeen hundreds and hold fairly steady, looking all the way out to twenty or twenty-nine. I know you all had that report and you had an opportunity to look at the methodologies that are used to calculate enrollment. I think there's some unique features about our school district that maybe make us a little bit different than one of districts in terms of letting students enroll, maybe they'll see a little bit more enrollment, learning new school, potentially as a second family, purchase, they're in the community, they're in junior high, and also a bit of an increase in, from eighth to ninth grade going to high school and that summer, so the students already St. John's, private schools, they're going to come back to the high school, so that's a number that you need to, yeah, so you want to talk. I do want to take a moment here to talk a little bit how we calculate, I think looking at enrollment from K three perspective is very fair to look at just a simple calculation, number of students, number of sections per grade level, points to the class size, so everything we go at this year is looking at between nineteen and twenty-three as class size. In grade four, we start to identify kids and we start to try, seven hundred is tried. So a pure mathematical equation doesn't make sense. If you have a high number of students identified for advanced program, which would maybe increase the sizes of those class while other classes are lower or vice versa, so it's not a good way to pure. So when we do that, we need to run master schedules, ask the principals for, what those class sizes are, and you can see something, you know, if you look at, if you did a pure math problem, that's a class size of twenty-one, but it might be twenty-seven in nineteen and that's how it plays out from fourth grade all the way to high school. So it's one of those things that just staring at enrollment, doing math, necessarily makes sense. So we go through that process with our intermediate middle school and high school principals as well. One of the things that you also may not be familiar with or if you need to be reminded of, in our negotiated agreement, we have the opportunity to add a sixth instructional class to see future of the secondary level. So right now, teachers are contracted for five periods, if we want to or we need to, we add a sixth section. That's done to your class sizes, maybe off a program that twelve kids signed up for, we'd like to run that class, but more hire staff members can do that. This year and in previous years, due to the high level enrollment in high school, we offered modest six period classes, ensure we offer twenty-six period classes. If you take that over and quantify it in terms of FTV as four teachers. So as enrollment has increased, we leveraged that to enhance the student class sizes. So what's happening is enrollment's dipping, we're backing off on those number of classes. So if I'm a board member, I'm thinking, why aren't we reducing four teachers? Well, what's happening is we're reducing the number of six periods at all. There is a cost savings to the district, but it's not significant in terms of, you know, the flip side of that is the last five or six years when enrollment's been real high, we haven't had that add over time, so I think it's a really good deal financially for the district, it makes sense to maybe sort of staff members do it, but that plays a lot into, as our enrollment lowers, maybe you're not seeing the reductions that you expected just.
Remind me, Bob, do you know how many have a six period next year or something?
I want to say it's between twelve and thirteen.
So almost half?
Yeah, so it is dropping, I think, between two.
And those are usually first semester or second semester?
Some over four years, some over four semester. So that's something to keep in mind. The other piece we've already talked about is the weakness of our program, we're in difficult financial times, we had to have some really difficult conversations, we would probably go to that program and say, okay, this is really a great hangover for kids, I'd like to do it, but we need to level this thing off, we probably need to go first to have a more patient staff in terms of class sizes. So I'm going to pause there, I said a lot, questions on enrollment or how that works?
Just think, so maybe a little bit more about the six periods, so as a teacher, the GUP, teaching their full schedule, they're adding the six, they're pulling up more OT going through the six periods, so it's kind of flexing their schedule.
Yeah, so it's adding addition on time, instructional time, same amount of time in the day, but they're adding instructional time, which increases rating and complaint for that staff member, they're compensating and allowing for that, but by no means is the cost, if you were to take those twenty, twenty six period to play that out financially compared to what we had before, is that?
I believe that their contract, I think, of two thousand, if it went to two thousand for this.
And you approve those annually, they're not reviewing those, so you can see those are going to come back around. I appreciate it's something.
So globally, you know, looking at, and I appreciate the explanation that that can't justify seventeen seventy-two by the number of students, but as you look at this trend, which is clearly a little bit of a downward trend in enrollment, do you see a downward trend in staffing?
Yeah, I would say, I would say more than the elementary and the secondary, I think you will see a lower number of six periods in the secondary and if, you know, I wanted to talk about kindergarten tonight, if kindergarten stays below a hundred students, you're going to see reductions almost evenly, some of that hopefully happens through attrition, you're not looking at people, but we've done some of that over the last five years as well, it has been some attrition in the history. But hopefully, you know, if the five sections becomes the norm, five and six, you're going to see some reduction in the same.
So that's beneficial, but if we're talking a difference of around two hundred students, that's a lot to be just at the elementary level. And I wonder, I think you've talked just before about class sizes and when you would consider not running a class, for example, in high school, if you only had six students that wanted, you may have a cutoff, you have generally kind of come to understand makes sense when not to run a class and then that could potentially make a difference even at the, at the upper level.
Sure, yeah, absolutely. We've been in a position where there's been a lot of things put into that, so if you're adding a new AP course or a program, you expect how many of the word orders as it starts and you may, you may have a few years where you stomach low numbers of like a teacher and kids broke the code, there then becomes a point where maybe we just don't have the kids, pursuing this is a tough thing.
And I've seen you combine things, like French, I think it's going to be combined next year, so that students still get the offering, but, you know, we're not paying for that teacher to do that. But it's something I think we need to keep our eye on, the demand for the classes, because we have been increasing the number of classes available to our students and with fewer students, I mean, clearly you're going to have fewer students in each of those classes and so.
Sure, I mean, that logic on six periods on the whole, and if we're starting to cap it, we're ten years on the first, so, you know, if it's a hundred and twenty, a hundred and fifty, probably go toward the current half, you know, smaller reductions, a hundred, and that starts to be the norm, which then the reductions, and we're going to make that decision as well.
Right, that's where I'm setting as well.
We can also offer, of course, one year and not the next, so we're only going to offer, you know, AP, whatever, every year.
As long as you have a teacher who can, you know, hire, a teacher or pretty every year, but, right, that's a good, there are lots of ways, I think, to get creative about doing it and, well, I'm looking forward to hearing more.
Just want to walk through the recommendations that we're looking at. When we transitioned to how to let the trend of enrollment in school for construction project, we felt that we were able to staff, we're already a little hard staff, so we could not replace that position, we actually needed attrition against that, so we've not had that position the last two school years, we're honestly right now, we need to bring that position back to, so dedicated for the school day. We are looking at globally, it covers, Lisa does a great job with principals doing kind of analysis of our needs and risks involved in that process as well, ensure that the needs of the students, staffing is appropriate, the, I guess, net net on all of these is additional one and a half hours, now we add two currently to this contract, and that is more about the library, just this, this is, that regulation is also there. I included an EMIS coordinator on here, just to remind board of education, I'm not sure everybody was on board at the time, we had the EMIS director, we abruptly, at that point, we contracted services, we're going to see to help us support those services and make sure that we're able to kind of stay afloat in that area. We replaced and hired a secretary, assistant superintendent, and over the last six or eight months, we've trained her in services and battled for more contracts, so we want to bring that position back into the district, I think we'll actually see savings if we can, for the assistant, maybe that's what's going to happen. So currently, I think Chris just said we need to study the salaries, so we're looking at, it makes sense in terms of being responsible in that position, so that was, you know, for.
Is Lisa going to assist that?
So.
It's going to help Lisa.
It's the same person.
Okay, so she'll still do it, but, well, that's great.
Mental health services, we've talked about this as part of our, in the construction log a year ago, we had a few recommendations that we were going to, mental health services at that time, we felt, we took those to district leadership team a year ago, we said, help us with that type of things, we thought it was a huge gap in mental health services. We're, of course, the last year identifying creative ways to bring these services to the district. This is not something to improve in terms of employee retention, I don't know if there's anything you want to talk about specific to these services or mentions that we would?
Well, I think that they're vital to the implementation of the PBIS framework, they'll serve to support students that in that, we have targeted and then intensive intervention response on the pyramid, I believe, sometimes with that, both, as Bob was saying, we're going to recommend doing the contracted services, not hiring a person. What I like about that is that we can evaluate how it's going. Also, both agencies are allowing us to interview and find the person who feels fit for our district, so it's not that someone is just going to be wasted here, we have to say something like that. We've been shopping for contracts for the school based mental health provider and we're getting really close to making this.
Again, this is a, we can include in the budget, I guess, of creating a position or hiring.
You would have access to this person in crisis situations too?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear you.
You would have access to this person in crisis situations too and have ongoing opportunities?
Yes, and actually, one of the agencies we're looking at currently already provides us with that emergency crisis management team and so that would be a really nice fit. A second agency already has a connection with us as well, so I don't think we can go wrong either, right?
The next recommendation, we currently have one and a half candidate positions in the classroom, we've had that historically over time, we've had posting for a halftime again for well over six months, we're not too far, we're working right now, it's just a way where a halftime position is, what we've been able to do with one mechanic is kind of stay afloat through outsourcing a lot of the services that we do, we pay and provide, so we're looking at the numbers, I think I've shared some of those, all the information, and besides the food, our gestures, what we're spending over time outsourcing on care, we believe we can make this a full-time position and offset that cost by investing a bit of time, so the recommendation is approval of point five, there is no evidence as a full-time position, that we're welcome in hopes of doing that. I will note that we were pursuing for almost two months collaborations, we tried to share a service and just, so that's why. PLA Coach, I know you, February, had a full presentation from Kenzen Kever, from Markson, construction coaching, I had shared that information with you, you know, I think the benefit in terms of overtraining, instructional, for us, this is there, if you look back at our instructional, our recommendations, we've reached our instructional, we had this conversation, you're going to have to make a decision, that one makes more sense from a larger perspective, so we are bringing that recommendation back around, maybe just back to you, maybe if you want to give a few comments on what your thoughts are on your math and how that is going this year, needs for ELA, and then like David has addressed or talked about, what can we expect in terms of return on the lesson?
Well, I think during your presentation, you really kind of illustrated all the benefits of both the agency and our, Bart's been incredibly helpful with the Lola of the bridge of the math program, across grade five, but she's been incredibly helpful with her sixth and all too, she's already on top of a website right now that will be a math website for teachers, as well as for families to access, she's already diving into work with principals to identify what are the goals and need building for her work for next year, but very, you know, she's got a sense of uncommon assessment development, and to bring new teachers and more new teachers to different grade levels, we have a couple of teachers transitioning into math for the first time or into a grade level, she's already set up meetings to train those teachers over the summer, so it's really nice to have a person in that position that has the flexibility to really kind of meet teachers where they are. So it would be awesome to have that assistance in ELA, I feel like ELA, because ELA skills cross disciplines and able to read and to write, process, it's so incredibly important, even thinking about our AP exams and our undercourse exams that. that I could really see about affecting that position. On our curriculum cycle, next year begins our cycle for ELA, we need a refinement, so the timing cannot be more perfect, so.
Is there a point of diminishing returns with these coaches where, you know, we're not rolling out a new curriculum, they've been here, they've had the time to implement their bag of tricks, all the teachers are sort of more consistently implementing the subjects the same way, with the same depth, and I mean, or?
Well, I think it's very similar to a lot of coach, that you can always use coaching, always, there's always reform improvement, we have new tests, new things, you know, that we're faced with, new mandates from the state that we're faced with, that we have to deal with, and there's new expectations on our students, you know, both secondary as well, but I feel like there's enough that we're constantly growing, I feel like after the year of adoption, redoing curriculum maps, and maybe refining assessments, there's a lot of work too, of just really pushing into classes and doing modeling, doing evaluations of teachers, whether not, not fronting evaluations, where she's getting feedback for improvement, Bart does a phenomenal job of that, so does N T, modeling different strategies for teachers to be able to use, giving them feedback, it's very different, I think, getting feedback from them, because they've built such nice relationships with teachers where there's that trust, so they feel okay in telling Bart or telling N T, like, I'm not finding success with this, I need to come up with a better approach, whereas I think if it been someone that is the evaluator or the principal, they might not feel as comfortable in making statements like that.
That's what, what's in that answer, in absence of a coach, whose responsibility is it to provide this type of coaching?
I think what, you know, what we have to realize is there are people that, that really mandates, or they're just taking the T test as the principal, that teacher evaluation system, part of that has placed on the, the principal is taking on the, you know, some of the, now, it's not that they're not doing that, or they're not having this conversation, they're stressed, but then, with all those teachers in there, if you, you know, if you went through the T test process, the amount of time teachers have to spend just to do the paperwork, front end, prepare for evaluation, it's hours and hours and hours, that is what a mandate upon them, it is taken away from their, do some things up today, and I think instructional coaching is a well better model, research in terms of helping to improve teaching, for sure, and what the other can die, I can trust, where does this end? And you could make an argument, sure, every content, not right, and you have to see that a little bit, it's next year, I mean, out of science, out, I mean, ELA, the reading side of things, processes, all content, there is, and as well, the sciences, I don't see, or, we just don't, we're not big on this, so for that level of staff, but this is a, maybe this changes how we, 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 teachers, but both Nancy and Bart, I think, they're going to be, um, who would be, those two, support teachers, and then, you know, part of the, 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 we get to the task we're looking at next year, we definitely knows that implementation tip off, you know, is internal education, so it's sort of being programmed, and your score's being dropped, we're trying to figure it out, well, if we level that off, do we actually not have that, are we now two years out of increasing that score, or not, those are the types of, maybe, I would suggest we look at in terms of, is this position of value, or are we?
And I see the value in positions, to me, it's similar to the conversation around the moment, I just don't want to lose sight of, yes, these positions are doing a lot of new things, they also have to be lightening or loaded a little bit on someone who is doing some of this, so then, you know, maybe we don't need as many.
I would suggest to you that the plate has been added to, to such a level in all of our offices, a lot of it due to state mandates, but it's not, you know, someone's , you know, getting their feedback, it's just.
Could I personally, a little bit, to that, too, I think there are some examples, like where we were in math, two adoptions ago, to have two programs that were polar opposites as far as the approach in math, is really a sign that if you don't have someone really looking at the picture that's across the district, things can really not be functional. I think you had asked the question about what would we do if we didn't have that position, I had already mentally kind of come up with a plan B, and the event that for next year, for this year, ELA rollout, we wouldn't have the, kind of been having that person, and I would probably contract a consultant, probably from Penn State or a local person that has a strong English department, but the downside to that is that after your adoption, they fade away, they also don't know our staff, and all of those examples that I said that as far as mapping, as far as assessment development, as far as pushing into classes, and really being a help or support for teachers over time, so it's just.
You're, you're taking that in turn.
Well, I'm looking at our two success stories right now, as far as coaches, I think that's been, you know, their content mastery and proven experience has been really important, but their ability to connect with teachers and to connect with the district students has been really, really critical, so I, you know, I think if we get interested in candidates, I think that, you know, I think it's easier for someone new to come in as an elementary teacher, or as an English teacher into a position, and kind of get their footing, to go into a position where we're serving K-12 teachers, that it's a challenge to developing relationships with people.
Now, to just put out there, a bunch of perspective, can we, certainly, I think we're going to have to be able to hire some of the best previous teacher experience, a couple of issues, a fifteen year veteran, so there is the possibility that we go through a process, and we feel like we've got the right, that, 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 that's, that's a possibility.
Well, my husband used to say to me, whenever I wanted to buy a new piece of furniture, think very carefully, because it seems like furniture comes into the house and it never leaves, and that's kind of how I look at additional staffing, you know, we create positions, we fall in love with it, we become reliant upon it, and so that's the caution that you're sensing, is, I feel like this is a beautiful new piece of furniture that we've probably been needing, but the caution about, once it's here, we may have declining enrollment, we may have needs to make cuts, and then we'll make it more problematic, but I know that a lot more under shoulders, and as you're evaluating the effectiveness of this position versus potentially another position, so that we keep the budget in check. So, you know, I'm supportive of it, and I've seen the results, and I think that's great, that's just, just to clarify a little bit where my caution is coming from, and I know you sense that responsibility as our, as our super leader, so.
Couple of just additional things, we have three retirements in the district, I think we're exact, about the school group retirements thus far, when you have a retirement, that's a cap, that's set from a threshold of what we need for, to, to experience or savings, it's not those particular individuals, it's not instrumentally, it's just separate, it's basically, so, topics, or, over sellout, but to the board, there are some savings there that play out, and it's just, from a budget perspective. I also want to bring to your attention, Kingard enrolled, it's a, it's the beta night existence, it's currently at the, the students, the four, registered for potentially registering, we scheduled, we had seven sections, we scheduled to six, I've kind of targeted the new day, we're not at a hundred, we consider looking at alternatives to higher district, what that means is, if we're retiring a social study, to be free, then retiring a department, maybe we consider mixing both of them, or into those positions, cutting back to five sections, that could play out to be a great group by the superintendent, save us money, it could play out in July, if I'm back, you'd say that was a complete failure, and the hires always want, or, you know, put that on the, that's.
How much of this, or is any of this moving in the moment, to, to the trend within parents to hold back or send, or, like, do we see bubbles go from one year to the next?
You know, it's, so I have a very personal conversation going on around this holding back, and you've seen, it's becoming a problem, you know, a lot of parents are just making that decision, hold back, their children, and actually contribute to try to make them to, to send this year, but.
So they don't even go to kindergarten screening?
Correct, they just, they just sit back, and, you know, what might, might, I think is at all, you know, some people are less than with that conversation all the way through the summer, and then maybe it's just a set, or it's key, so, I don't understand it, which may affect even to look at marketing, and what position is placed in the district in, so hopefully, you know, do a better job, you know, with the register.
It would be great to have a conversation with the parents too, what they're hearing from parents along those lines, and maybe like, help you get on the same page, if family has something to say.
We share information, we have some very recent events, to Kingard, to talk about mine, and we don't have an answer, and it's never like seventy, which is critical, five, or a hundred and twenty, which is, or a hundred and five, which is critical, six, it's eighty-four, it's like, really.
Is there a financial way to incentivize the decision?
It's not.
Seriously, it's something to think about, if you make a decision by May thirtieth, there's a 10% savings on your whole day tuition or something.
Proper sizing appliances, like, kind of getting up to incentivize with money.
Well, we do with so many other things, register by this date to get, we pay this, and we register at the last minute, we did, spent more to do things at the last minute. Something to, something, okay.
So, that, and then the additional six period, we've already covered, but what's next, who is kind of excited, are you going to keep on construction coaches, and that type of content, and I take that, this is a stop, and you value these two positions for your success, and that is.
So there's no new positions on your horizon for next year? Like, just now, at this juncture, I'm not going to hold you to it, but right now, it's not like we're going to be looking at new positions every year.
I'm not looking for a science, construction coach next year, we are going to talk about future planning, and everything we have on the future issue, so.
Right, so that could, obviously, that could make some changes, but remind me, how many new positions did we have last year?
Um.
We had the math, but ultimately it was one and a half, right?
Right, and then, you know, the quant, you know, to quantify this, if the number was about sixty-seven thousand dollars, which we, what we're going to take away, what could happen, so.
Right, so that, that changed.
That changed.
I'd like to turn the meeting over to Mrs. McCallum.
Oh, I'm sorry.
This is the opportunity to look at five year forecast and may update, prior to the board's recommendation to act on it, I do want to just stress that it's a may update, it's a lot less than what we've seen in the past, obviously, the forecast is prepared in October, in the fall, and at that point, you're looking at the current fiscal year plus four additional years, the may update is really an opportunity to say, okay, this year is about three quarters of what we completed in the fiscal year, so where are we, are we on track to what we were expecting, and where do we need to make some additions, and at the same time, obviously, we're having those conversations about budgeting for next year, so Bob and I have had discussions about, is this a forecast presentation, or is it a budget presentation, and really, at the may update time, it really can be combined, okay, so we are in the process of planning our budget for next year, and I guess that's a good starting point for this forecast conversation, to say that I have been involved in cabinet's discussions about staffing, and everything that Bob went through, with his presentation, I've been able to cost out to include the budget for next year, because, and then you'll see this in the presentation, because the largest portion of your expenditures are your personnel costs, any budget process would need to start with staffing, personnel costs, so, coming in new to the district, and obviously, just filling a gap for you in the transition between treasurers, it was still important for me to put my own lens on your staffing, so creating a position control document, to be able to determine what, what staffing levels are in here now, what are those estimated costs for this year, and how does that look in your budget and your current forecast, and then taking that, rolling it forward for next year, so the budget process started there with position control, and those estimates went into assumptions about infringement fits that you'll see in this presentation, and then got to a level of conversations with each department to say, what are your budget needs for next year, and again, coming in at a time, you know, where, where we have an opportunity to do things differently, but obviously, that will continue to evolve, wanted to work with the cabinet members and say, what are your expectations for the budgeting process for next year, so one of the things that I heard was, I need for more interaction, so what we did was, we actually submitted a document for the budget templates that cabinet members had previously received, just on, on, so, this way, they were able to have a spreadsheet online, so I found I was supposed to be reading a spreadsheet anyway, so this way they had a spreadsheet, they were able to plan thoughtfully about the items that they had in the past, they were able to make assumptions for the future, they were able to insert additional comments that Bob and I can ever do, so, we are, Bob and I are just starting that process now, looking at, looking at those budgets, and looking at those comments, it seems like it's been a very positive process, I got good feedback from, from everybody who worked on the document, and, and I've had subsequent conversations with people too, as they've been very, so we kind of prompted people to either pick up the phone, or come in my office and open up the spreadsheet, and so now we're both looking at it, and we're saying, okay, what is this number, what is that number, what are you going to split forward, and what I saw were administrators who were very thoughtful, some making requests and carefully justifying what we're asking for next year, and then others saying, you know, it actually amounted to us, so there was some savings in there, so, you know, that was a very positive process, and I think when that came together with staffing, because Bob and I had conversations on that, and, and the additional staffing pieces that we put in there, and some of the additional needs that we need to apply, that we need to be in there, it was very consistent with what the forecast already had going forward, as far as its budget was going to change, so, it, it, to me, it was what comes first, the chicken or the egg, forecast or the budget, but I think what we saw was a very well planned out forecast that created in the fall, so your budget expectations for next year align with what your forecast had in mind for next year.
Thank you, I wanted to say thank you, that's very customer service oriented, to go through that process, and really listening to what could be improved, and creating a process for the cabinet members, I also have a question with regard to the staffing. I also have a question with regard to the staffing. When you ran your own analysis, did you see a difference in the numbers from the numbers what we saw in the forecast from October?
It was very similar. So I saw two things. I saw the staffing piece really align with your forecast for next year and I saw the expenditure expectations for this year being on track to where we are at this point. So it was really prepared as of the end of March. So we were running the reports of actuals as of March 30th, the last closed month, 75% of the way through your fiscal year and then determining, okay, based on your budget, based on your forecast, aligns with your budget, are you 75% there? And in most cases you were. And where you weren't, it was it evened out to something else, so overall, you're 75% of the way through the budget.
And it might be preempting you, but on the revenue side, we did have the county six-year update. I wasn't sure if those property value assessment changes had been incorporated in October because it was right around the time those had come out, were they? And if not, are they now? I wish to see your may update.
Let me go through. Let me go through, I'll address revenue and expenditures separately. I did want to give you though that background of the budgeting process so that you know that these two things do tend to be. Okay. You're doing a five-year forecast and may update because it is required by the state to do that update at this point. So a few goals in mind for doing that. Again, just bridging the gap here between during your treasurer transition. Like Bob's slide, it is important to again remember that your forecasting and your budgeting and your finances are not a once a year event or twice a year event that you forecast. So similar to Bob's slide, know that this is an annual process and there are different milestones throughout the year that allow us to take a look at our progress financially. I wanted to put a slide in there to show you where you were in October, so here's your October forecast. I guess I can address some of your questions here. The October, this is obviously the very high level summary of your revenues and your expenditures and then what the trend would be as far as deficit spending each year and then your income balances. Obviously, the key takeaways here are your beginning balance, your deficit spending, and then your ending balance as it progresses and what does it mean in the out years. I think you're not going to see a lot of change. If I go to the next slide, with your may summary, you don't see a lot of change between the October and the May, but I will break down some of those changes. As you mentioned, the board has taken some actions this year that have impacted and that really didn't need to be included, but for the most part, the assumptions were consistent with the October. So as far as the real estate updates, those sort of assumptions that are built into your forecast, other than the board's action to do a designated inside village to bring in improvement, the assumptions will not change. So your assessed valuation here made the same. The district has access to a financial software package called EFR that treasurers commonly use that follow those simulations. So it actually breaks down all of your classes of property tax. We probably just can say it's your property tax valuation. Your valuations are divided into several segments, probably seeing over time. And again, in October, you would work through all of that. So the software would break down your residential and agricultural property valuation versus your commercial versus your public utility versus property. Each of those are going to grow at a different rate and they're going to be taxed at a different rate. So you want to put different simulations in there for each one. You would typically do that in October, you would necessarily change that in the may update unless there was a significant change. And we had previously talked about the estimates that are included in your may update for the inside village, when we talked about the estimated amount of that one, if I'm large. Again, we had some updated numbers on what the evaluation actually is for this year. So that number may have been a little bit more accurate and then again, what the estimates were in the out years. But that was one lump number, so we were taking one combined assessed valuation. We weren't necessarily breaking it down per class of property. Okay? So that doesn't have that lump in detail in the may update.
Do you have a sentiment? I didn't ask for this at the time, so I feel like we don't respond to that back to this. I wonder sometimes how overly conservative we are about our assessed valuation as I live in these forecast and it'd be interesting to compare the last five to 10 years on what we had in there. We want to be conservative, but not so conservative that it's really skewed our ability to know what our revenues are going to be. So I don't know if you have a sense of that just from what we looked at or can we definitely use it as a board ask?
Just a general comment, I think most districts are very conservative with their assessed valuation estimates. They're always going to be conservative and especially since 2008. Because I think every community saw what the recession in 2008 did to their property values and some communities have recovered faster than others. And I've seen economic updates that have said, yes, we're recovering from 2008. Have we completely recovered yet or not? And then if we have or have not, how does that separate trend for how we're going to recover in the future? So since 2008 happened, maybe you've seen a greater increase in property valuations because we're in a recovery. But once that recovery levels off, you may not see those same percentages again. So there are a lot of experts that advise treasurers, I was just definitely O.S. phone conference last week, attending those economic updates and watching those presentations of trend lines and property tax valuations and receipts and that sort of thing and how it plays into the general economy as well. So that's really a study in itself.
And I would just like to add, we have to remember that even though our property values grow, our assessed value can grow since we're pretty much residential and we're subject to household 920 except on the inside mills or new construction, that our revenue doesn't hardly grows.
But when we do a new lobby, it affects what we would expect receipts to be on that piece, so it's important.
Right, but we don't put a new lobby, you can't put a new lobby in there. But what I'm saying, your assessed value changes does not.
It doesn't impact you year to year, right?
Anyway, so that's a study in itself and you can break that down into a lot more detail. There's upward as district treasurer doing that. So I suspect that in October 2019, you may see a more detailed breakdown of this. But for your may update, I'm showing you a summary. I do have some additional breakdowns on this just for my own clarification to get up to speed on your district. So and that'll be provided with the assumptions that follow the five-year forecast. Again, another takeaway from your five-year forecast presentation is always the fact that your district is having a problem from property tax. So that's why that's such a key area to discuss and to track. You're proctor that were impacted by that household 920, so you don't see great fluctuations in property taxes each year. And then the other areas of revenue include public utilities, the unrestricted grants and aid, restricted grants and aid, the property tax allocation that's a reimbursement from the state, and then other operating revenues that include your kindergarten tuitions, your interests, any number of additional things, rentals that come into the district. Your next breakdown is general property tax. So that shows you the assumptions for each year of the five-year forecast, the year-over-year changes and the year-over-year percentage change. A couple of things to note on that, so you see a big decrease between 18 and 19 and I think it's been brought up in several presentations that fiscal year 18 saw changes to the federal tax laws that encouraged property tax orders maybe to make their property tax payments from calendar year 2018. In calendar year 2017, it was still fiscal 18, so that they would get an additional benefit under federal income taxes. So I think what this district saw was a lot of folks making an additional payment that would have otherwise fallen in fiscal 19 in fiscal 18. So that's why you see a pretty sharp decline from fiscal 18 to fiscal 19. There was an update, so there was actually probably a higher assessed valuation in those years, but I think it was a timing issue. And you're also receiving revenues from two counties on two different schedules, so again, I think that's a timing issue. Going forward in fiscal 20, you see a slight decrease, but then from 2021, 22, and 23, what that reflects is that shift in those inside mills to property. So if you break that number down, you would see a decrease while your property tax receipts are going up and your AB is going as a result of your AB going up, you're actually taking out about $800,000 like you're starting in 2021 and setting that aside in a separate fund. Your forecast only shows general fund receipts and expenditures, so the district obviously has a number of other funds that were independently of all that. So you don't see that reflected in this one year.
So revenues are going down slightly and the expenses are also going up, transferring out.
You're almost two slides ahead. Sorry, let me get there.
And that built over about 800 days. You're getting to 2020.
So you see a half-year collection in 2020 because for January 2020 collection, March you look like that, which falls in fiscal 2020. But your July and August 2020 collections are actually for fiscal 2021. The next piece of revenue worth mentioning is the unrestricted grant and aid number. That's your state funding for your unrestricted state funding. There are a few other pieces to state funding, but this is primarily what we refer to as your guarantee.
So how much, so if the guarantee, if they got rid of the guarantee, Cup Patterson plan for our district, does all 1.8 go away or how much of that?
The Cup Patterson fair funding formula, I had a presentation on that last week as well, is attempting to simplify the formula and correct it so that more districts, it applies to more districts. Because by referring to a district as a guarantee or a cap, which is the opposite of a guarantee, is indicating that when we put you on the formula, it either generates not enough revenue to compensate for the revenues that you have or actual operations, or it generates so much, perhaps, you know, that the district won't be funded. So those are the districts that are capped. So they tried to correct the formula and get more districts on the formula, I guess. About 16% of districts still would not fall on that formula. Chagrin Falls is one of those 16%. So we would still have a guarantee, state would still offer a guarantee, guaranteeing at least fiscal 19 receipts. And then that would carry through to the next by name, so fiscal 20, 21. And it looked like it made sense. I mean, that's what happened with Chagrin Falls. The formula, the new formula, they applied and so we were here.
But the removal of the guarantee, the floor, would that's definitely a factor. I would say there's a more of a fight with this budget going on. Governor has one interpretation of the revenues, Senate Finance Chair has a totally different approach of not tolerating old moral, talk about Cup Patterson in entirety, it's not a federal, it's just not going to happen, which are the money there. I'm trying to get a sense of what they actually tried to, but he, Matt really understands what I'm talking about. So I would say.
But then, so that this 1.8, I asked the question, this 1.8 includes other specific, like student specific title funding. It's not just, or is that just the money that we receive? Do you know what I mean?
The unrestricted grants and aid made up of four different pieces of funding. So it's your formula funding, so your guarantee. There's two pieces of that state funding that are considered below the line and those are allocations for preschool and special education transportation.
So how much of this is the formula of our state?
Most of it. So if I'm looking at fiscal 19, almost 1.7 million, 188, is formula funding. Your preschool amount is $43,000, your special ed transportation number is 55, and then the other piece of it that comes to the separate is your principal, which is about 100.
Hi, I have one question. For Cup Patterson, can you elaborate on why Chagrin Falls outside of that? I started to sort of like, this 16% of districts that, is it because they would be underfunded? So they still needed a floor?
Yes.
Okay.
That's what the guarantee is.
So we've got so much less on Cup Patterson, but they'll keep us at the guarantee.
Yes, the guarantee is the floor and the cap is the ceiling.
They're using two measures, they're using property values and income and kind of.
Didn't help us. Didn't help us.
Okay, cool. So I guess I gave you the detail of that unrestricted raise and you come up with those questions. And then again, looking at your expenditures, so the other half of your forecast, your, like I said, your expenditures are primarily on personnel and benefits and that's going to be in the district, so close to 80%. Your purchase services, supplies, capital, other objects, those are really those department budgets that I talked about and how we put those together. And again, purchase services is a big chunk and it's worth mentioning, but the district doesn't have a lot of control over some of those things, the district tuition numbers. Some of them are, are DDox from the state, so we don't even get them from the report as an expenditure each month that are some of the statements. Some of them are contracts that we enter into and I think through my conversations with cabinet members on their budget, their department budgets, they were very thoughtful in planning those. So I would say that that number is very accurate. They're very thoughtful in when they plan those contracts and estimating increases and getting as accurate information as possible before they write the budgets. So I'm confident in that number.
And do our healthcare expenses fall on their employee benefits and personal health services?
Employee benefits is a separate category in the state's funding.
Is that all healthcare?
No, it's not. The district is required to pay a share of an employee's retirement system contribution. So an employee contributes, if you're classified 10%, if you're certificated, 14% of your own pay to the retirement system, the district is required to provide a 14% match for both certificate classifieds.
You might know this information from the, I can't just find it, I would love to know from last year to this year, what our healthcare expenses actually. I would love to know from last year to this year, what our healthcare expenses actually looked like and if they've changed in the forecast moving forward. We're hoping to see some savings.
I think that was incorporated for October. That was a part of the, but yes.
It's good to revisit to see where achieving more savings.
Yeah, I can, I can tell you that that was, and that was called out in your assumptions as well in the fall. So it was noted that those planned design changes that were motioned in last year would come into play beginning October first, twenty eighteen. And so they were considered this year, in this year. And again, when I, when I reviewed the budgets and the status, it was right out. So what you predicted is where you're about, is about where you are. Going forward in the budgeting process, I think that the easy assumption to make is that it's going to go up six percent a year. And that's what your partner in our book, Alford, tells you, they help us manage our benefit packages. And that's the information that they provided. They met with me when I got here and they told me the same, six percent increase a year. But I think it's important to remember too in your forecast and specifically in your budget, want to be as accurate as possible, but that change actually starts October first. So in planning your budget, what I did, I took the approach of there's one rate for three months, there's another rate for nine months. Well, that six is a lot better a couple of years ago than that was twelve, you know? So.
Slowing the growth is good, but you want more savings.
But the other piece of that too is about, so if you look at that benefit number, it's about six point three billion dollars. Three and a half million of it is your medical donor contributions. The rest of it is your retirement share contribution. You're required to pay a small portion of that to the share of your employee's Medicare tax, and then you have workers' compensation.
So on top of salaries, the cost of benefits is what percent is about forty percent, that you mentioned?
Well, it depends on the employee.
Right.
So the standard amount that we, the base amount we would budget for an employee would be sixteen percent.
Sixteen.
Because that's your fourteen percent retirement, that's a one percent Medicare and about a half a percent of workers' comp. So you would take sixteen percent. Then it depends which medical plan the employee takes. So if they take family, it's considerably higher for the district share than if they take single company. Or some of them are down, or many of them are part-time or, you know, not eight-hour day people if, if they don't take the plan or whatever, or they're paid in front of them.
And I know you have to have all those details, it's probably your chart mixture, so you can know exactly, but globally, it's about sixteen, seventeen percent or a bit more. I'm not seeing the dollars here.
It's, again, it's a percentage of which health plan the person takes and how much they get. So if I'm a.
But I'm saying as a, as a percent of our, as part of our overall budget, our global budget, we have X dollars for personnel and then X dollars for benefits. What percent is that?
I mean, three point five million into twenty.
Twenty over fifty-five.
No, we're not comparing to the whole.
Right, right, but it's one's fifty-five percent, one's twenty, so yeah.
That's what I was trying to.
I was actually a little surprised. I don't know how much the proportion of what they were cost. I was guessing it was thirty-five, so it was twenty divided by fifty-five, so it's something.
So it's just, it's just good for us to be aware, if we approve a position or a salary, there's another thirty-six percent that's up with that. But of course, we want to provide to our employees, it's not always the cost of, the face value cost of the position.
Right, that factors a little bit into what you were talking about. Like I'd say the sixth period, it's like paying somebody OT versus like hiring a whole other position, you'd be in that position way plus thirty-six percent better than the cost.
As opposed to just sixteen percent on the whole.
Correct.
The other thing to consider too is when I do the budget, if you were hiring a new employee, I would always put a maximum benefit. So always assume that you're covering your budget, so the district would pay a maximum budget. Like Bob said, you know, for teaching positions, we would budget at a maximum, which would be three years experience, maximum education level. We had initially had some conversations around even what level would the new custodian and custodian will come in at. And then if there was an internal person, how do you replace that internal one level? So we did have those thoughtful conversations. Going forward, this is an expenditure breakdown of the district here again. So twenty nineteen, that lines up with your budget, and it does line with your expenditures for this year. Obviously, twenty eighteen is an actual, so that was your budget last year. Twenty twenty going forward, that is very near to the budget that Bob and I have been discussing for twenty twenty. We're not quite there yet, we have a couple of departments to go through, but we're very close to. So if you wanted to know what your budget for next year is, it's rarely most of that thirty-two million dollar. And then I guess the other major piece, and you had mentioned it, the transfers out is the expenditure line that corresponds with the permanent improvements. I guess the other thing I should have called out on the last slide was the decline in the capital outlet numbers. But again, that was a result of reclassifying the cost purchases out of the general fund that we were doing. So it doesn't mean that they're not going to happen, it just lowers the whole bar to put that up. So that's what you see with the reduction in the operating transfers out as well. And so.
I'm sorry, is this only from the perspective of, again, in general?
Yes.
So.
Your forecast is only forecast.
It's if we add inside village to, as far as like, total PI spend or total PI spend?
You just kept it neutral to the budget so that the inside mill transfer doesn't add to what we have, the I, something not the I. But my question is, added.
Just to clarify what you were saying, because you're absolutely right. I reduce the amount of permanent improvement expenditures by the assumed revenue of the one point five bills.
The transfer out of the general.
So where we were saying eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars, we're not above one point five bills, so that's where I reduced your transfers.
She's got it here, that's the budget you added in October for permanent improvement. Oh, I already. Buses ain't that simple, permanent improvement, wouldn't it have had it gone up by that much if you added? Because now you're part of a budget for permanent improvement if you added buses and expenditures.
The buses were moved out of your capital outlet line, but they were added to.
Then the money that was spent on that should also go with that permanent.
Correct.
I don't think you did that.
But it did.
Oh, you did.
You only have.
It shouldn't have.
Aggregate number. And you only have a missing there. So that's just following out.
Total PI number should have gone up.
It went down by the amount of the offset of PI for the inside village. It went up by the amount of buses and vehicles from the capital outlet. The number is for twenty, or one one five.
Oh, I see, I'm looking at the, I should be looking at line seven for twenty nineteen, one point seven three five instead of one point five. I guess I'm just wondering what's.
We didn't make a change in twenty nineteen, so your change begins in twenty twenty.
So the inside village was out then? Plus period?
Yes.
So what's, so what's number of that plus inside village?
Inside village was the assumption of inside village for twenty twenty is one hundred and twenty thousand dollars. So that was reduced from your transfers out. But it was offset by three hundred thousand dollars of buses and vehicles from the capital outlet.
PI number was states.
That was your initial permanent improvement transfer.
So it doesn't, so the PI number does not buy plus?
I guess the question is, when you say permanent improvement on this chart, is that the permanent improvement fund?
Permanent improvement is a piece of your operating transfers out being included. So there are additional lines that you're transferring money.
So this is the portion of the transfer out that's for permanent improvement, not the PI spend for the year? Like how much are we spending on credit, spending for PI in twenty twenty?
Well, I can't clear on that. I guess.
Request is something.
Just the PI number.
And is it possible that you took the buses out of the chart ahead, this night ahead, but didn't adjust, adjust this for buses? Is, is that the permanent improvement budget for twenty? Those are the numbers that we had in forecast last year. But last year, last October, we did have the buses included. So if you now have.
So now you have a bus going in.
PI.
And then you have the inside village.
Right, well, inside mills is a wash, so I'm, that one I'm good with. But the buses are new to the PI fund. So if they were before in the general fund, they should now, we should now bump the PI fund up by the number.
Correct.
This new to buses, but the number hasn't changed.
The one 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 five oh oh three reflects the additional three hundred thousand.
For one year?
That's the eight twenty twenty.
And then twenty twenty-one?
And in twenty twenty-one, it's an additional two hundred thousand dollars for buses, but it's a reduction on eight hundred and forty-nine thousand for the inside village. And I can get you additional information on that.
Yeah, definitely.
For our next presentation, because you don't have all the detail on this slide. So I apologize, that wasn't clear on the slide, because there, there is additional information that you could look at that might make it a little.
You know what the transfers out would be if you didn't have buses and you didn't have the inside village? That's my way of asking that question.
In twenty twenty. I'm just, I'm going to manipulate this spreadsheet. In twenty twenty, if you take out the buses and the inside village, the operating transfers is one point two three five.
Yeah, well, that one point two three five is definitely logical.
Yes.
So on this sheet, and I know you're going to get this from us and come back to us, but when you put permanent improvement on that line, what is that to indicate?
That is a portion of your operating transfers out. So when you make operating transfers out.
That's the amount of the transfers out from the general fund that are for permanent improvement. But that number will go down because we're not still transferring a million next year as we have inside mills, we're going to be sub, some planters and stuff.
We will be going up, like you said.
By the inside.
By the buses that will take them out of the capital outlet.
Okay, we'll just let you scrub it and come back to us. We'll do, maybe we could just focus on the PI number next month or next meeting.
Okay. I apologize if that wasn't the clearest slide out there.
The actual five transfers out. And operating transfers out of one, it's a million seven.
But that, that was, permanent improvement is the vehicle transfer out.
Correct.
It's okay, I think it will be easier if we just get it all over the place and come back to it. But this is really nicely done and we really appreciate all the work you did with the staff and giving us, and it's very reassuring to hear that where we thought we were going to be is where we're at, so that's always a good thing. Is there anything else that you would want to call our attention to with regard to this analysis?
I think those are the key points that you should, you should take away from. It's a may update right now, and I think you'll probably do something very different next year, October. And then again, with the finance committee, I think there's another opportunity for more discussion around the forecast and some of those assumptions and what's in there.
And then just to clarify, I think I heard our superintendent say that the new positions that are being proposed tonight, that the board will be voting on, are included in these numbers and in the forecast. So that forecast will change if for some reason those positions aren't filled or.
Well, we're going to be collecting patients.
Yes, it's not even current time.
It's a more visitation.
So next is consent agenda items. Can I have a motion for consent agenda item seven A? Okay. Any discussion? I'm sorry, second?
Second.
Moved by, this is Otoel seconded by Mr. Rankin. Any discussion on these? Remind me, that class was also one of the APs that was convoked, a cracked AP.
No, there's physics, like.
He may be at C.
That's what I mean.
Physics, there's, there's physics.
There's regular physics, there's physics one, physics one, physics two, some of the students into have taken the C for, but not offered. Any other discussion? Mrs. Otoel, yes.
Mr. Rankin? This is Garvey? Yes. This is Rose? Yes. This is Cantinger? Yes.
Okay, so may I have a motion for superintendent's recommendations eight A, B, and C?
Sure.
Second? Second. Moved by Mr. Cantinger, seconded by Mrs. Otoel. Mr. Rankin, would you like to speak to these three? We're only going through C. We'll come back to that. Any other discussion on A, B, and C? Mrs. Otoel, would you please take the call?
Mr. Cantinger?
Yes.
Mrs. Otoel?
Yes.
Mrs. Garvey?
Yes.
Mrs. Rose?
Yes.
Mr. Rankin?
May I have a motion for superintendent's recommendation eight C, eight D. So move for second. Moved by Mrs. Otoel, seconded by Mrs. Rose, Mr. Rankin.
Oh, there's a chance anybody would like that.
Mr. Cantinger, I'll be next, David. Mr. Kansinger, I'll be next, David. So I think we had a pretty thorough discussion about it earlier and we have a sense of what some of our reservations are. I think as we talk about budgetary goals for the coming year, I'm unsure what they get at all. I'm in a place in this country, it would be hard decisions with regard to filling these positions. But as far as improving the position, it's a good idea if we can manage it with resources trying to manage. So that's my own comment.
Just got to make sure financial first.
Hearing that too.
Mrs. O'Toole?
Yes.
Mrs. Rose?
Yes.
Mrs. Garvey?
Yes.
Mr. Rankin?
Yes.
Mr. Kansinger?
Yes.
Okay. So finally, may I have a motion for superintendent's recommendations 8D through, I'm sorry, E through I? Moved by Mrs. Rose, seconded by Mr. Kansinger. Mr. Rankin, would you talk to us through these?
Item B is the, in this form, the court management, it's a great system, a position that's discussed in the C. I have to, I have to, for, really into the building, for staff to, to have classrooms prepared. I think it's 1017, I think G, B as well, that, uh, same kind of setup. This is a transition, a box on the larger side of the building. I would, which is the second, the doctor's office, which is discussed last year. You know, it's a, uh, pool, uh, basically, uh, it's K through three, students serving at lower grade level. This, uh, three, two, and we have to have a hundred and three technical, and then just, uh, this is a, uh, a, uh, a, uh, a, uh...
We trust that they know what they're doing. That's not an area that I would do. Any expertise to add to? Any other discussion?
Item G, I just, I don't see a price on that. I assume it's a similar 175, they, something like that. Or is it the A Patrick amount?
Yeah, it would actually be, uh, less.
Okay, it's a Patrick. It's not, it's a huge one.
Any other discussion? Mrs. O'Toole?
Mrs. Rose?
Yes.
Mr. Kansinger?
Yes.
Mrs. Garvey?
Yes.
Mrs. Garvey?
Yes.
Yes.
Can I have a motion for treasurer's recommendations 9A and B? Second. Now, a second?
Second.
Moved by Mrs. O'Toole, seconded by Mrs. Rose. Any discussion?
The first one is simply a, in that, in that, since we're under requirements, and some generous donations, first three for our Army Sharp project. And then the last one is this year's donation on pending spending for the life.
Is that the way you had real estate management or...
You recently, yeah, you recently did last year's donation. It's a past.
I'm sorry, the first two, I, do you know anything about those recommendations? I would not, I'm not...
Can you make up that? Most of them, two, they're, uh, the English services.
Ah, that's, that's very...
And, uh, London, all the budgeting is in here, the district, the services.
So it's kind of in kind of a little bit, I think. Any other discussion? Mrs. O'Toole?
Yes. Mrs. Rose?
Yes.
Mrs. Garvey?
Yes.
Mr. Kansinger?
Yes.
Mr. Rankin?
Other business? I see there's something on the agenda. Is this...
So, um, I believe I mentioned this before, but I suppose the high school business department about a project related to, to involve in the main school. We have spaces that, you know, team named and, and, and for their names, since we were in term, we have, that felt like one or two, it's a space called, uh, we have to, down in the basement of the main school. So that's the last that presented, we issued a problem to, to the class of the tour of the space. And they are, you know, they're kind of like, uh, playing, which, and, and, and that's a, um, their presentations and chief one. So, um, and invite board members to see their presentation.
But these are the dates and...